I met with you, students of high school, college, along with the parents, four times in the half of last 2016. And I also met with you three months ago. In one of the town hall meetings, of course, you may recall that in the month of February, we had five town hall meetings in the Maoko constituency. You may recall further, just before Carnival, we met at the Urban Council's office, where we prioritized the roads that need to be repaired in the entire Kenfield community. And I'm again very humble to be here tonight again to meet with you, the people of Kenfield. There is no better honour than the one to represent you in the Maoko constituency. But tonight, we're placing special emphasis on Kenfield. As heard just before I spoke by Ms. Heywood, the Maoko constituency is a very huge one. Kenfield, as you know, by itself and in itself, is a very large community. It encompasses not only the traditional Kenfield, but Bennohavin, yes, Bennohavin, Yanda, Roji, River State, Kenfield East, among others. I say that because very often, communities like Yanda and Bennohavin are not made mention of. But they too belong to the whole and must be recognized, ladies and gentlemen, and my dear friends. I want to say to you that we have achieved a lot in the Maoko constituency. But I'm the first to admit that there is so much more to be achieved. And I want to give you a commitment that I shall redouble my effort in order to ensure that the quality of life is improved in the Kenfield area. I want to spend some time, first of all, to go back and examine the gains we have made and what we need to do in order to add value to our lives. And if I have time, towards the end, I made some reference to our national politics and to look at a series, a political series, that have been produced by the leadership of the Workers' Party and its operative, a series with numerous episodes, all geared to was destroying one man. And the theme for that series is Scary It Must Go. And totally reckless as to the collateral damage that has been done to this beautiful country. But let us first of all examine some of the gains we have made in the Kenfield area. You may recall when I became the Member of Parliament for the Kenfield area, the people of Yanda and Bennohavin were squatters. And they were squatters since 1979. Even that so? I see some of you from Bennohavin and Yanda, they're all quiet. Isn't that so? Thank you very much. The people of Yanda and Bennohavin had no road access to the homes. Isn't that so? Bennohavin had one street light. I can recall also how the people of Bennohavin suffered. And according to Jacob Killer Miller, "May your soul rest in peace", living in Bennohavin was crucial running. I can recall, I'm happy to see, the likes of Nikki, Heywood, and Karen. I'm so glad to see you guys today. And Nikki, of course, gave the welcome remarks. She looks very beautiful, isn't that so? But she has styles a very long time ago. I can recall in Bennohavin, the road was a riverbed, isn't that so? With very huge stones, caire. And when people like Karen, who also has styles and like to dress, and Nikki used to dress from their homes, they used to put their nice shoes with the nice heels in their bags, isn't that so? And they would put on their Toyota. Who sells Toyota here? Toyota is no sandal, two less no, sandal, plastic sandal, to navigate the way through on the stone, isn't that so? My good friends, ladies and gentlemen of Kenfield, Dominicans listening, that is the harsh reality that the people of Yanda and Bennohavin had to experience day in and day night, day and night, isn't that so? On the rain and also in dry weather. I'm happy to report here today that both the residents of Yanda and Bennohavin today have the dignity of having certificates of titles to the lots. I'm happy to report further that both the people of Yanda and Bennohavin have road access to the homes. Further, I'm happy to report that this Labour Party administration spent well over $2 million in a Bennohavin area to build a nice roads for you, isn't that so? And to protect you from bad weather. Today, if you drive to Bennohavin, you're not only going to see nice road, but you're going to see sidewalks. So today, Karen and Nikki and others can put their nice heels from their homes and slides to their cars and their buses with the utmost dignity because of the investment we have made in you, the people of Bennohavin and Kenfield. And that is development, my dear friends. It is time we set the record straight and to dispel that myth that Redbackmore is not concerned about Kenfield people. That is Kenfield too, isn't that so? Now, further, when I became the Member of Parliament in Lower River State, only one lane was done. Today, every single lane is done in Lower River State. To me, that is Kenfield also. And we have also improved and significantly rehabilitated the road from Mariners leading up to Upper River State. There's much more work to be done. We have also installed sidewalks at the housing scheme in Kenfield. And those sidewalks were built by Mr. Stalin Anthony. He's right there today, sitting next to his beautiful daughter. Isn't that Kenfield too? Now, recently, we did some work in Kenfield in terms of actually improving the road network up there. I think Ninth Street and Second Street, we did some work also. And then, we also constructed a returning wall just after you left the cultural, omni-cultural centre leading into the RBC housing scheme. You may recall that the road there was undermined and then we had to construct a returning wall to correct this defect to this road. We have also worked, ladies and gentlemen, with the basketball players in Roji, Upper Kenfield. And on two occasions, made monies available to them. I can recall further that at one stage, the entire community of Kenfield was very dark because I was told then that Dominic had disconnected almost 90 street lights. With my intervention, my dear friends, government took over every street light up to today. We have also assisted a number of students, I will not call names. And I'm happy that some of them have returned with degrees in contemporary disciplines. Civil engineering. There's one here tonight who prayed for us. He is from Kenfield, isn't that so? And I'm happy that he is back and working and making a contribution to mainstream society. That is what we are about in Labour Party, my dear friends. We will continue to assist people to repair the homes. And as I speak to you, there's an outstanding number of homes to be fitted with washrooms, namely seven homes, mostly in the Bennohavin area and maybe one or two in Yanda. And within the next couple of months, I can give you the assurance that every house in Kenfield will be fitted with washroom and toilet facility, my dear friends. That's what we are about. A number of persons who worked this work before us and made Dominic what it is today for us to enjoy. But you know what? They did not pay into the dividend fund or into social security. As a consequence, my dear friends, they receive no old age pension. With the intervention of this Labour Party administration, we have a number of persons who fit in this category in Kenfield getting $300 every month, my dear friend, because of the intervention of the Labour Party administration. That is development, my dear friends. Not too long ago, I met with parents right there. And they said to me, you know, Maoko have bosses, Massak have bosses, all of our bosses, we don't have bosses, to take our secondary school students to school. I said, okay, I will do it in September. And they say, you know, mister, it's all about Maoko. I'm happy to report that Kenfield has more bosses carrying school children than Maoko. So we're providing bosses, free bosses, for high school students in Kenfield, in Roji, in Kenfield East, in River State, and the general Kenfield area. Look one bus driver there, Rasta. Isn't that so, Rasta? Yes, we will speak it through tonight. We will speak it through according to King Obstinet. You are the one who have made me what I am today. So I have the obligation and the responsibility to work for you. I work for you all the time, my dear friends. We met, of course, and some of the high school and college students because of the fact that your classes are irregular. Because some students at the College have classes at 8:30, some have at 2:00. What we are going to do, and we have started collecting the names, is to provide an allowance for every college student who is not working. Underscore that there, who is not working, so that they can pay their school, their transportation to go to the state college. That's what we shall be doing. I made reference just now about roads. And we, I said so to you before, and there again, we have all the estimates and designs for all the roads that require repairs in Kenfield. I said just now, we did some work in Kenfield East and of course, Second and Ninth Street, and Eighth Street, sorry. Now, as I speak, we have approved the Minister for Finance with his good self on a cabinet. I want to commend my cabinet colleagues, so give me the support. $755,000 for roadworks in Kenfield East and RBC housing scheme. The potential contractors who have been invited to bid for the project, six of them have returned their bid documents and very shortly, we shall be starting work in Kenfield East and RBC housing scheme. Don't you forget that you were the ones who said to me at the Urban Council building that these are the roads you want to start first, isn't that so? I met with you first to, at least to inform me and to advise me as to the way forward. As soon as we are finished doing that, we shall in a systematic way give attention to 14th Street and 21st Street in Upper Roji, Kenfield. The roads in 21st Street in Roji, Kenfield, has to be repaired, is not in a good condition. And that area is also part of Kenfield. So we shall be doing that on the flat next to the airport. We also have the estimate for this road. And we are going to transform Kenfield and make it the urban community it ought to be in 2017 and beyond, my dear friends. That is what I'm there for and that is what we shall do together as one. I want to say further to you that when we speak about the nature island of Dominica, we speak about Dominica is green and nice. But this nature island concept has to be manifested in our overall disposition, our attitude, the way we dispose of our waste, the way we keep in front of our yards, isn't that so? I will continue to do my part as a pirate. That is why we have provided five additional persons under the beautification program to assist the Urban Council in order to keep the grass properly hot and actually to ensure that the place is kept clean. And further, further, you may recall at the inauguration of the new Kenfield Council, I gave the commitment to provide the people of Kenfield with a new truck. Within one week, we were able to provide a check of $150,000 to the council. Of course, I can recall that the then chairperson of the Urban Council, in the name of Mr. Simeon, wrote to me on three different occasions with invoices for that truck. And I'm very happy that tomorrow, God willing, at 3 o'clock, I, as your humble servant, shall be handing over a brand-new truck to the tune of $150,000 to the Urban Council to service you, the people of Kenfield, my dear friends. There is no reason why we should have grass on any lane or street in Kenfield, my dear friends. And I want to commend the crew from Bennohavin. Richard, who has been contracted, apart from the Urban Council's effort, but by central government, to take the road from the intersection by Bennohavin there all the way back to the Wastus Tank to ensure that that roadway is always kept clean and tidy, my dear friends. That is what we are about. And we shall embark in, shall be embarking, sorry, on a comprehensive beautification program. I will be doing that in Maoko too and in Kenfield. We will procure the plants and to ensure that they are planted and to actually beautify the community and to add more value to your property. But I want to call on your cooperation because Lent has passed, Easter has passed, May Day is coming, and it's time to get rid of all the derelicts in Kenfield, my dear friends. There are too many derelict vehicles in Kenfield and it's time for them to go, my dear friends. Whether you like it or not. That responsibility has to be placed back on you, the people of Kenfield, and on the Urban Council. So I will play my part and I will laser and work with all the relevant authorities and agencies to ensure that the legal requirements are met. So to tag those vehicles and the owners, I'm calling on you, to voluntarily liberate the roads on the side of the streets voluntarily. Because they will be tagged and told to your cause, at your cause, my dear friend, very, very soon, I promise you. Trust me, that will be done. So we shall be embarking on a comprehensive eradication of derelicts' drive to include Kenfield and every part of the Maoko constituency. Kenfield is an urban area. Derelict vehicles do not only pose an environmental health hazard, but it brings down the property values of people's home. And we have to be serious about that. You'll be surprised that you may have a nice house for rent and somebody comes that you see three old dumpers there. You say, I don't have a kid, no? Your house, which was of course $300,000, is now $200,000, isn't that so? Those things have implications. It is not rare, blackmail or residence carry to come and take them out for you. That is our fault. You are the ones who must act. And all the folks now who are living in the other parts of Dominica, who put their garbage in the back of their vehicles and come and dump them in Kenfield and Maoko, garde-pu-yo. Because that happening, you know? Let me give you a joke. Something was happening as I enter Maoko. So I came there, parked once for two hours, and I hold a fellow. Even though, so I held a fellow. The man living way down past Central going, I don't call him a man, going no. And he carried his zordis, they call that, and he brought his zordis, Pikati, where I was born, to dump. When I come out and I say, I hold you, he say, you, but you named yours, man. I say, that's my boy. You laughing? You see? But these are serious business, my dear friends. Serious business. And I want to say to you further, I want to say to you further. We are aware of a number of young persons are very much cynical about the system. And for them, the system has left them behind. But no one is actually blaming the prime agent of socialization, the homes. And all of a sudden now, the homes want to download the responsibilities on politicians and also on schools. And you know what happened before when folks like me were getting old, were growing up? The homes, the schools, the churches complemented each other. You see? So you had what they call a situation whereby the value system was actually incorporated in the minds of the people from all angles. Today, the homes are weak. The schools are weak to a certain extent. So people get the refuge from peer groups and they feel free and cool. So you have an emergence now of what they call troublesome youth groups. And if they are not checked, my dear friends, they will graduate into gangs with a criminal intent and objective. And that is why we have to do it ourselves to go down to the level and talk with them. We have done that in Maoko. We just did that in Campbell. We're going to continue. And on the 14th of May, your humble servant, we'll be meeting all the young guys who are serious. Who are serious. And tell me how I can help you. And you want to get yourself in some small business enterprise development? You submit a proposal that makes sense, we are going to help you. Because I want to say to you, and it's important for you to understand, that every person is born with a God-given talent. And I want to say to you further that nothing wrong in being a plumber or a mechanic or a carpenter or a baker. Because in many instances, my dear friends, ladies and gentlemen, a good plumber, a good baker, a good carpenter can make more money than a medical doctor, my dear friends. The important thing, but my father was a builder. He did plants also. The important thing, whatever you do, do it with the highest degree of excellence and money will follow you. But book nowadays, they want the money first way and they work after. And they believe in religion and they believe everybody waiting, but they blame themselves. So when we meet and we have a discussion and you submit your proposal, it's up to you to take it to add value to your life. I believe in helping people to walk. I do not believe in creating a dependency. There's nothing like free business in life. Somebody has to pay for it. So when you are given something to help you, you must now help yourself and make a contribution to your society and your country and the whole, my dear friends. So if you tell me you want to go into plumbing and you need tools, we provide you the money. Do not take that money and go Saint Martin and shop because God will punish you. Papa God will punish you. So all the things we shall be doing together. So we'll meet on the 14th of May and already have sent the message out right here. And as we have done in the Maoko area and have done in Campbell. I'm coming to Kenfield before I go to Massak and come to Massak after. Although we have some small business program that we're doing in Massak. But Kenfield has a problem, honestly. Too many young guys sitting by the roadside wasting themselves their time. So I'm going to meet you. I'm going to meet you. And I'll say it again. I'll say it again. I'll say it again, my dear friends. And I said every time I'm given an opportunity by God and by you to speak to you. That anyone who says to you that smoking ganja or how you live first thing in the morning or anytime is good for you, the person doesn't like you. Equally, the abuse of alcohol. Let me give you a joke about alcohol. Alcohol is one of the most difficult drugs to withdraw from because it stays in your system for a very long time. I was surprised at university when we went out to halfway houses and recovery homes the impact that alcohol abuse had on people's psyche. So that's why people, when they call them alcoholic, before they smell, they sue it. Because, you know what? Don't laugh now, or you're laughing too much. Because the thing is all in your system. So once you smell that, boop, they fall in the dung. And if you give them a better drink, you're feeling bad, plat, 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 plat. So my dear friends, those are things you have to do for yourselves. You take care of yourself. You cannot put that responsibility on the Prime Minister or myself or somebody else, my dear friends. And we are going to reorganize the Kenfield feast to make it make sense. As I've said before, it does not make sense to have a feast just to go and dance. As I've said before, it does not make sense to have a feast just to go and dance on Wulei. What do you call Wulei? Wuleko. You have to use it as a medium to send a message to the rest of the country and outside world. Why are we having that feast? What does it mean to us? But it cannot have a feast in Kenfield, and ninety percent of the people of Kenfield are not taking part. The people of Kenfield have to get themselves engaged. So we'll be trying a creative way. And I'm going to work if any group in Kenfield that is serious about developing Kenfield. I want to say to you, if I close, that I have never taken part in any form of council election in my constituency. A council is, to me, an arm of central government. The only difference is that it operates from the community level, but it's an auxiliary of central government. Therefore, it makes no sense to be fighting with one another. We have to work together and see this beautiful country as a collective enterprise. So, my dear friends, we will continue to work with you and to ensure that everybody in Kenfield is taken on board. And I want to say to you, we have already done the design, and a contractor has been recommended for the construction of a new returning wall in Kenfield housing scheme just next to Mr. Blair's home. That has to be done almost right now before the reconstruction starts. We also have identified four critical areas in the river, in the upper River State area that need urgent dredging. And very soon, you shall see the commencement of that activity. And I'll be talking about River State, I'm sorry, Chakal Valley. I made a group there a couple of weeks ago, and very soon, we shall be meeting with the people in order to tell them as to how do we intend to move forward. The task is endless, but I want to say to you, I'm committed to the cause in order to make Kenfield what it ought to be in 2017 and beyond. I'm aware of the Donkey Beach area, but we are looking at an overall plan. And of course, we should also incorporate the Donkey Beach area. So, my dear friends, no stone will be left untuned. We have other speakers here tonight, and I want to say to you, as a Minister for Justice, Immigration and National Security, I'm very much concerned about the play of politics in this beautiful country of Dominica. When we became independent, my dear friends, ladies and gentlemen, we did not only inherit a constitution. Oh, we passed a constitution. Or inherit a flag. But there were certain intangible gifts that were bestowed onto us as a people. One of these gift is freedom of expression. Another is your right to vote for a party of your choice whenever election is called. And a major hallmark of the democratic system is competitive politics. Meaning, every political party has a right to provide its party plan for the social and economic development of this beautiful country. Nothing wrong in that. But I cannot recall in the history of this country that the drumbeat of violence and anger been struck so often in this beautiful country. And those of us who sit silent and say that it's not going to affect us, we are going to have ourselves to be blamed when our children and our children's children would have inherited a legacy of despair and hopelessness. So, in closing, my dear friends, I do not hold anybody in hand. People have a right to support a party of their choice. That is cool. And it is cool to say, "Red Blackmore, big eyes, and he has to go", I have no beef with that. They put family in my mouth, you too. It is cool, it is healthy for the democratic system. But I'll say something to you here tonight because my last child is twenty-three years old. And he asked me the last time he came down, "Why are you doing this?" But we are here, and you see people like Wannabita Finn Daniel and Dr. Daro, medical doctor by profession, a wonderful gentleman, came in this thing because we believe in advancing this country for the betterment of all of us. So I want to briefly talk about that political series that have been produced with many episodes to it by the Workers' Party leadership and its operative in Dominica and overseas. Episodes all with one theme. Scary must go. And my dear friends, nothing wrong in saying that. And Scary has to go based on allegations. But the frightening thing is, my dear friends, when that has been done, all the episodes have been played via the social media, via every medium of information. Everything that has been said seeks to destroy this beautiful country's name. They're totally reckless as to the collateral damage that has been caused to this beautiful country, my dear friends. We are going to pay for that if we sit and say nothing about it. Because to me, if I'm in opposition, I want to inherit a legacy of prosperity. I don't want to inherit something that is shattered and to start from scratch, is not so? It makes no logical sense. Now, when you hear and you read a blog, and I feel personally affected by that. Because when we started the mission with the passport, I was the minister there. And I know about the integrity of this passport. And we are going to even improve them further for security reasons. And we have to improve this passport in order to ensure that we meet international standards. And the implication therefore, had we not at this time, that it meant therefore that Dominican nationals would not have been able to travel to America and Canada under the countries. So the notion that somehow, somehow, that a guy has been given ten thousand books, blank books, and people with degrees are giving currency to that. It tells you, "We are ready yet, we are ready yet", it is too much hate in this country, and we must dispel that once and for all, my dear friends. We are ready yet. And the only persons who are suffering are the people of Dominica. Tell you why? Because the progressive ideas that matter are not being spoken about. We have Dr. Daro there tonight, and he will tell you about the National Hospital. Are they talking about that? No! Now, you have Dr. Daro there at the last voted presentation. When you're talking about a health pilot programme catering for single mothers with babies three and under to mitigate against the medical expenses. But they are talking about that. Things that America is not talking about. You got my point? They are talking about that. And I have been able to capitalise that programme by making five million dollars available. They are not talking about that. And they're not talking about. Just after a couple of months, when we had this fire down at Silver Lake that we are more than quarter with the construction of a new building for the people in Silver Lake. And they're not talking about, they're not talking about the West Bridge. A guy they call Rose Valley came on my Facebook page. And I said I'm going to unmask him by, because I know who he is. And somebody made a comment about the West Bridge, you know, we have all the advertisement now, we're going to open the West Bridge on May first, is not so? On my Facebook page, on my Facebook page, Rose Valley comes and he makes a comment. I was nice to him, I say, "Well, we talk about nothing", he say, "It's nice to talk about it, but it's too expensive". So I said to him, "If you stand for the truth, you should therefore speak to all the elements of that project, to wit, a new bridge with nice lights, the dredging of the river, the construction of a returning wall, and rehabilitation of St. Johnson Avenue. All those are elements of that project", but they're not talking about that. They're talking about the bridge, the bridge, the bridge. But you know what, my dear friends? The bridge, the bridge, the bridge is going to open on May first, my dear friends. So you know what I'm saying? That is development. Dr. Daro there, look, he's there, he's there. He is there, I can talk to him because when things struck, I won't forget that name, Erica, that monster storm. Two of us were in the middle of it, is not so? Poor boy. Poor boy, poor Dr. Daro. I was sick about him, but I'm not saying that because you get vexed with me. Thank you. Now, the people at Dubic who live in a river, very vulnerable area. Today, you go to Santa and Grand Bay, wonderful homes, wonderful homes. Okay? The people now have nice view too. Okay, situations whereby you had a family of seven. For example, you may had a situation where you had a mother, if a child, and it's her children. Now that child with children, they're able to get a separate home for themselves? That is development, my dear friends. And as we speak, the people of Pidisavant were developing, my dear friends, a model village for the people of Pidisavant in Belleville. It's going to be very, very nice, I promise you. You paraparit kon sa, yes? So those are the issues, my friends. Improvement to healthcare, improvement to education, improvement to the housing stock, improvement to the road stock. Those are the fundamental principles upon which politics should be fought and won, my dear friends, not by difference in one another. We are too small for that. We are brothers, we are sisters, we are cousins, we are godfather to all our friends' children. How can we fight among ourselves, my dear friends? So we must say to politicians like myself, who want to use people to advance the hate that now take a pain, it's time to stop it. And if I'm doing it too, you must stop me too, my dear friends. I do not come to politics for that. And in closing, I'll say to you, if you say something to me, I don't like it, I think I have a right to say to you, I don't like it. When you talk the truth, people say you're lying. People like people who like to whoop-swap. My concern. If I'm like that, my money go to two in a great. Okay? And in closing, I want to say goodnight to Mr. Ivana Joseph. Let me give you a joke. Somebody spoke about myself. You know, I was a police officer. I was a recruit, and I was transferred to the CID office. And in those days, it was difficult to stay in CID office. So when my one was over, that's why I always have respect for Mr. Joseph. He said, "I'm not going to live CID", so he took me to the Commission of Police, Dr. Mr. Home? Mr. Opia? No. Owen Philip? And he said, "Sir, this man has everything we're looking for, and we want him to stay in CID". And I have the utmost respect for him. I went to university, I came back, and we're still very close. And I think I've learnt a lot to come into politics, my dear friends. It's about saving people. And I want to give you the people of Kenfield that we are going to make Kenfield very, very, very great. And I'm looking forward to go back to Kenfield East. I'm going to come back there when the work and the wood have started. We'll have about three, four contractors up there to work with light and speed for you. And I want you guys to plant flowers and flowers to make it pretty beautiful. The people of Kenfield have been very nice to me, when I meet with them, they take me to the yard, we have a meeting, and I wish, no matter if I were there, I wish if everybody was like that. Whenever I go to Kenfield East or Viewpoint Warner or Sylvina, I don't have to pay for snacks, no refreshment. I hope everybody's listening. So thank you very much. And I'm looking to continue to work for you and to make Kenfield what it ought to be in 2017 and beyond. Thank you very much.
One of the purpose of the town hall meetings is that people always complain and say after elections, "Parrebs don't come back till after the next five years". So it was in recognition of this that our leader, the Honorable Prime Minister Dr. Scary, decided you all have to go back to your people periodically to report and that you can hear from your people. Because when we came to you in 2014, we came with a manifesto, and things change, like plans, you have a plan, you don't just go through, things happen, and you have to go back to your plan, reorganise and redesign. And so that's one of the purposes of the town hall meetings. And as cabinet colleagues, we are here to support your representative. So you are here, you are here to hear from us, we are here to hear from you and see how we can better your lives. In my portfolio, I represent urban councils, town councils, village councils. And tonight, I really want to speak about the urban council of Kenfield. I'll also talk to you about some of the expenditures and some of the things that we have done with Tropical Storm Erica and your impact on us in helping us achieve the goal that we have achieved so far. I must say, I must say, I'm very, a little bit disappointed in what's happening at the council. As Honorable Blackmore said, we do not get involved in local government. That is a community-based institution. And it's an institution that should remain to assist people in their community regardless to what colour you are. It should be an institution that should bring people together, unite people, because you need all hands on deck to develop your community. One of the first things that struck me with your council, it's, to me, I find there is a witch hunt now for workers in the council, and that's not right. You cannot, no one should try to take bread from somebody's mouth. Nobody would swear. Because this world, God has given us everything that we require, and there is a share for everybody. Everybody have their share in this world, and we should not try to deprive anybody. If you cannot assist somebody to elevate themselves, don't try to put them down. Because at the end of the day, you suffer, and then you go back and you say people have done you things, but it's out of the heart and out of the way you treat people that it often comes back and bites you. So, never try to take bread. And I find, I've been getting complaints and hearing things, and I see a witch hunt going on. And I hope this council can go back, work with the people who are there with you, do not try to take away bread from them. Another thing I saw with your council, which really baffled me, was when there was the council election in Another thing I saw with your council, which really baffled me, was when there was the council election in Lapland. What is, what are people from Kenfield Urban Council doing in Lapland? You are not from the community, so this really creates division. We are already too divided. And then we cannot go and create more division in another community. And I think, I hope you all, Kenfield Urban Council, I hope you all cease from that. Even with the purchase of the truck, when they came in, I mean, your intent should be the development of your community. The truck was already ordered under the old council. The old council had gone in, got all kind of invoices, found the better price, and they just wanted to change that. But then, we had to step down from my ministry because we were responsible for that thing and say, no, we have to go ahead with what the old council does because the other invoice was too high and what we had, and the company had already gone ahead and ordered the truck. So, you know, these are two little petty things that bring, you know, disunity among people. It's not a witch hunt, the role of councils is community development. In the past, councils of the past, they raised funds through house rates, through little projects in community, through sales, barbecue. And so a lot of that does not exist. Most of the funds that council get now is through representation of PAL Reps. Now more than ever, councils get huge sums of money. All the road project, that money goes to the council for payment. So the PAL rep through representation makes it a viable thing for the councils to have funds to be able to carry on and make the community a better place. And so you need that kind of collaboration. It's local government working with central government. You can't be vexed with central government. Because it's through central government that you will be able to develop your community, all the roads that are coming. The Ministry of Social Services, as I said earlier, we are responsible for the council, urban council and other things. Besides that, we are also responsible for the social services. And tonight, I need to explain some of our functionalities so that you can understand. Because a lot of people seems to say that certain functions should be in the Ministry of Social Services, like the support program. So I have to give you the differentiation between those services to, so that you understand why it is the way it is. The functions of the Ministry of Social Services, we do public assistance, which is the nomenclature, common nomenclature is like welfare assistance. We do, we have foster care, and we have people in Kenfield who help us a lot. And the name which rushes to my mind is Irma Lafo. And Irma, I just want to say publicly, thank you very much for your assistance to the foster care children. We also have institutions like Chances, which also help with children who are in, you know, borderline, children who are at risk. And Chances, part of the ministry, which helps with that. We have the Yes We Care program, which is heavily criticized by the other side, the opposition. And this is a great, even before I came into that government stuff, I have always been a person who like to assist people. That's my role. Because I think when God blesses you, it's not for yourself, it's to bless others. And when we try to keep the blessings, then he comes back and he takes it. The story of the talent in the Bible tells us about that. So when God blesses you, it's to help others. And so, before I used to look at this Yes We Care program, but knowing the minister of that and reading the assessment and reading the things that we have to do in order to place people on the program, it's really heart-wrenching and you have to be heartless not to be able to help people in such situations. And so, this has been the brainchild of the Prime Minister, our leader, Honorable Roosevelt Scarry. And this is one of the real, real flagships of that government, the Yes We Care program. We sometimes say people have children, but you make, you have thigh fingers on one hand, they all different. And sometimes our fingers are wide open, they far from each other, they don't connect to each other. And so with people who sometimes they have children in name, but sometimes children go, they don't care about parents, they don't care, and they leave them alone. And you see these people suffering because they have this children, you are going to say you're not going to help? And we at the Ministry of Social Services, we help anybody. When the assessment comes to me, I do not ask who the people support. The question is, are these people really in need? And that is the way we go in the Ministry of Social Services to help these people under the Yes We Care program. Right now, we have over, almost 200 people in that program, we have about nine supervisors, we have over 43 caretakers. And what we are going to do, we are going to assess this program to make sure that it is reaching where it has to reach. And so you as the constituents, the residents of Kenfield, you can help us. If you have the information about people who are really in need, you can just come to the Ministry of Social Services, bring the names of the person. What we will do, we will just send the team to assess. So we have to look out for each other. And I'm imploring on you, if you can take up that role so that we can help the elderly in our country to have a better life, a more dignified life. Because I mean, a lot of us, we have this pit latrine situation, a lot of us grew up in that thing. Some young children now, they wouldn't know about pit latrine. But today, with people with all their utensils and these people sleeping in that, for days it's there, they have nobody to take it off unless some good person is passing to help them. Think of you, we never know where we will fall in life. Just put yourself in people's places and with that in your heart, try to help somebody and you'll be blessed for it. Now, as I said, public assistance, we are now revisiting, reassessing. Because there are lots of people in the public assistance program who were in the program because of their children, they were destitute. The children have grown big, they are working, and these people continue to receive money and not saying that they have moved on. This is kind of a little dishonest, some of them, they don't know, they don't know, some of them. But I think if people are sufficiently honest, they can come to say, well, I have moved on so that somebody else can get, so they, it's sustained. Now, we have, we have to do those things. So for the public assistance, the same thing goes. If you know of somebody you think they are not working, who need a little thing, and sometimes in public assistance, what I'm seeing now as the minister is the age range, it's not just old people. Public assistance is for destitute people. And destitution is defined any salary less than $1,000 a month. You might be in a destitute case. But if you have other people augmenting your salary, then, and you can do otherwise, then, you know, you're okay. But destitution is salaries less than $1,000. And so, what I see now is a lot of young people. And young people, especially young girls, I admonish you to select the boys that you go with. Look for guys who can help you. Because we see the cases where young girls are saying they don't know where the father is, the father is not working. And as a result, they need some assistance. Now, if you leave that person, they can either go out, get somebody else and get another child, is that what you want? So in cases like this, when we get these cases, we review them and then we may say, okay, we will give you assistance for a year. Go and look for a job, go and retool yourself, go to adult education. Because when you take on these young people, you do not want to take them on forever. You want them to go to get out of that program, not to stay on this program. And so, for that same ministry with the adult education, we have the youth ministry with youth skills. We ask them, we are going to help you for you, but then you have to retool yourself so that you will be able to get a job, to do what, to help yourself and help your child. The other thing my ministry is really involving, well, everybody knows about Tropical Storm Erica. And where the government, we had budgeted in the year, but we had to go and go back because of this storm and re-estimate and do things differently. And that is why I couldn't understand when I heard in, in Parliament that government had an estimate of 23 million for one thing, and the next year government came and they said they had 57 million. So somebody stole the money. I mean, so when Tropical Storm Erica came, we had to re-estimate to send the funds, to channel the funds where it was most needed, and that's what estimation does. The Ministry of Social, through the Ministry of Social Services, we decided, well, you know, Pidit Savan, Doctor Daru's constituency was wiped out. And we had to find places for these people, these people were destitute also. And this government, first time in my life, I have seen a government take on the role of almost like an insurance company, helping people after tropical disturbance. I went through Hurricane David, and a lot of people here went through Hurricane David. Everybody, if you hadn't got insurance, the only thing you got was ration from the US people. These little green teens, you got a little sugar and you were left on your own to fend. This is the first government that has done so much for people in such situation. And to tell you how much we have expended, for some of the people, well, Pidit Savan was displaced, Colli Ho, Kuli B Street, Dewick, Campbell, some to a lesser extent and some to a greater extent. But how much have we spent on these people? Four, it's so much. The first thing we did was for six months, it was in tranches of six months. And we had to rent guesthouses for people. For the first six months, we had the rental guesthouses like Springfield, Saint Amy, Mr. Clean, Saint Anthony. We had, we expended 900,113.55 on rent to those guesthouses. Rental assistance, we gave to people who were not in these guesthouses, but who had homes and they rented. We spent in excess of 1.5 million dollars for these people, just rental assistance to families. For loss of household contents, because you had, for example, in Colli Ho, Kuli B Street, where the river went in, washed away their stuff. So there was an assessment done, some people lost almost everything and some people lost a little. I know with human beings, some people were assessing and they did the wrong thing. Some people who should have gotten, did not get, and again, you'll always find that where humans are concerned. But for loss of household content, where people had complete loss and partial loss, we spent in excess of 1.7 million dollars. And even today, we are still getting estimates from people, but we have passed that stage. We have passed, it's two years just now, you know, almost three years since that time, we have passed that stage. Displacement allowance, we still, because these people, take for example, from Pidit Savan, Colli Ho too, Kuli B Street, some of them lost their livelihoods, their tools, their gardens were gone. Those, the bay oil industry, these people lost their livelihood. And in addition to the rental assistance that we were giving these people, we also gave them some displacement allowance. And we gave displacement allowance to at least 345 families at a total cost, for six months, the first six months, 1.5 million dollars. And every six months, we go back to Cabinet, reassess the sheet and still get that same amount. And it is still ongoing. The last amount that was Cabinet approved was done for up to the end of the financial year. So people are covered up to the end of June till the new financial year begins. And that can only come from a government who really cares about people. In addition to, we, we didn't stop there, we were also supplying food to people who were affected. Giving them a small displacement allowance, paying their rent, but we also had to give them food supplies. But from the Ministry of Social Services, we paid 11,935 dollars for the six, in the six months. Because people, Dominicans, I tell you, when you are in difficulty, they come to your rescue. They come to your rescue. And people who had were giving to those who hadn't got. And so the food bill wasn't that high, so we got, we spent 11,935 dollars. At this stage, I just want to say thank you so very much to some people in Kenfield who cooked, asking for nothing, and brought food to Colli Ho people. Thank you so much. I remember, I remember, I just forgot the name, somebody was doing that, but it wasn't through me. It was just out of the generosity of their heart. I'll get the name, with Tessa, Tessa, thank you so much. Another person, as soon as, the first set of water I got for Colli Ho people was from the Lanslot family. And that was from a child, Mrs. Lanslot, daughter I taught, and that child stayed away and they gave us over 20 cartons of water for Colli Ho. I want to say, I've said thank you, but I want to say thank you so much. So that's how people work and people care for each other in times like this. Now, when you have Kenfield people, when I listen to some programs and people call this Yes We Care people greedy, you, you, you wonder what kind of, do they have a heart at all? Because you cannot be seeing people like this who so need. So this tells you that nowhere in that person's psyche would they ever think of giving anybody any assistance in that nature. And I come to the 300 dollars assistance, 70 plus. Because up to yesterday, I had people coming to me, I was at a function and somebody said their parents not getting the 70, the 300 dollars. And some people still don't understand. When the concept for the 300, 200 at first it was, came about, it was as a result of people who had worked and you had the National Provident Fund, their cards were lost, their points were not collected. And when they moved to social security, they got nothing. Some people, when social security came in, you could take your money in different ways. You could take a lump sum or you could take it fortnightly or monthly. Some people took a lump sum. At that time, 2,000, 3,000 dollars looked great, so you had a lot of money in your hands. But now, how many years after, you took, they took the lump sum, so they are receiving nothing. This money is finished. And so, the non-contributory social security pension is for people like this, who are receiving absolutely nothing. Some people have their people overseas, but if you really look at the television to look at real news and not fake news, you will see what's happening in the outer world. And sometimes, you go to Western Union as a Dominican, and you see now Dominicans are sending money to their children. So people are not getting that kind of money. And in the non-contributory social security pension, when they come to assess you, some people come on the knowledge that they know you have a child overseas, so they just assume you shouldn't be getting. But that's not how it's supposed to be. When they come to assess you, even if your child is sending a little thing for you, and it's not regular, you need to get on board on that non-contributory social security if you are not making 300 dollars a month or so. So it's for people like this. And as I said, it started with 200, again, CBI program. And it's as a result of the CBI program that we were able, the Prime Minister said, look here, these people have to get a share of that CBI because CBI may not last forever. Already it's been battled and that's where this money come from. So let us give our people a piece of that pie. So it was increased to 300 as a result. So all the fight that's going on with all this So all the fight that's going on with all this passport thing, this is where the money is coming from. Remember, it is not something passed in Parliament, it's not a policy, it's a program that exists. So if another government comes in and say, "I do not want that, people not going to get it," they can easily take it off, because it's not a compulsory thing. So people just think, when you sit and you listen to people, what you are listening to and what you are hearing, analyze for yourself. Source credibility is a very important thing, where you get your news from. Yellow can come and tell you something, then a principal will tell you something, who would you believe? So source credibility is very important. People tend to just say things, and people just, and it's, it's so baffling to see people who supposed to have a level of intelligence and believing and repeating, because they tell you, they see things on Facebook. And that's why older people always say, "Common sense beat studiation." Very much so, if you don't, you can have all the education, and you don't have common sense, you are not going to make it. So you need to put that in. So for the three-hundred-seventy-plus non-contributory Social Security pension, that is what it is. Now, you have heard on the other side that they are saying the support program which exists, or the what we call the Red Clinic, should be in the Ministry of Social Services. It cannot be, you have different situations. You, the social, in Ministry of Social Services, you have workers in the Yes! We Care, workers in the welfare, who, when the report come, who need to go and do an assessment. It takes a little time, by the time they go, they check the person, the person isn't there, they write their report, it comes back for approval, it takes some time. And you may have somebody whose child is dying, or the person is sick, who really needs immediate assistance, we do not have that facility. So that is where the support program comes in. It's more an immediate solution to some of the problems that we, social problems that we have. So if you have a medical problem, somebody needs to get out, you go to the hospital, your person gets sick, you have no money, no insurance, and you have to fly this person out, are you going to say, "Boy, you have to go through that for them to assess you, so let, by the time the person dead?" So that's where the social, the support program comes in. And what is happening now with that support program? Everybody used to flock to Rosu, so we have sat, we have analyzed, and what we have taken a stand now to decentralize that program, so everybody won't go into town. So we'll have offices in different localities, and people will go there, and we can channel that, so you'll have less people, so it can be processed faster from where it is. So that is what your government has been doing for you. I heard, you know, somebody on the radio say, "This, um, what's that? This is the year when we take back our government." This is the year when we take back, and I sat, and I have been trying to reconcile, what does that mean? Because I know in a government, you do it by the ballot, which is every five years, the system that we have. And if it's not five years yet for the election, what does that mean that we're taking back the government in 2017? So these are the things you sit and you analyze, because the only other way, as we have seen, maybe is through violence, through protest, and we have seen the chant, and people have come up with all kinds of contortion, of news, to falsify things, to make, and they don't care even though they mash up Dominica, they don't care even though they mash up Dominica. What I want is power, and I want it now, regardless to what is going to happen to Dominica. And some of you will think, "It's the Honorable Prime Minister who will suffer," but he can easily take his family and go. Though, who will remain here to suffer? A lot of us can just go. And who will be the one suffering when you destroy the country? So I'm asking you to think hard, when people say things to you, check it out, you are not that stupid as a sponge to just take it in, ask a question, so that you can, that's how you learn, and not just take things as it comes. Now, um, one other thing I'd like to mention from my ministry also, just recently, in December, again, CBI program, and you see the whole concept of building back better after Tropical Storm Erika, that is what most of the money for CBI is for, building back better. And one of the, or some of the institutions that the Prime Minister, one day he just called me and he said, "I think we should be doing something for the home, you know, it's bothering me a bit, we need to get these people together and hear their problems, and see what they need, how we can help them." And so we quickly called a meeting to some of, like Maho Home, Community Hostel, House of Hope, Operation Youth Quick, Parents Advocating for Children with Disabilities, Workshop for the Blind, and we call these people to a quick meeting, the infirmary, brought to home, and we call them to a meeting with the Prime Minister to hear what their needs were. Because we do not want, with all these negative things that's been produced about Dominica, that we will no longer get investors, or people will no longer be coming to our country to invest heavily, and this money will just be there and gone, and some people, if they throw us out, they'll come get it and pay their debts or do whatever, because it seems as if that's what's going on. And so the PM said, "We have to help these institutions, because it's elderly." And they came, we had an amicable discussion. The Prime Minister told them, if within a week, they could have invoices to meet, you know, to say what they really need in their institutions to make it better, they could have the money almost immediately. But, you know, getting invoices, it takes time, and so it took a little while. But we were so happy when March twenty-fourth came, when everybody had submitted, that we were able to help the different homes, the problems that they had submitted. We gave, we gave out on that day four-hundred-and-sixty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars to these homes for the help that they sought, and that is what the Dominica Labor Party government is about. That is the kind of leadership that we have, leadership that cares about people, not ourselves. Most of us came into that to help people, not to take from people. Even the three-hundred dollars that some people are getting, they still go and take it from them when they call their radio thongs. They wouldn't say that, you know, this is, this is an old person trying to give that, let's not take that one, leave it, let those that have give, no, they take. But we have never in anything carried out any radio phone to ask for anything, to pay for anything. Most of us, we are able to assist, we do it willingly, we do it, and we know, we assure that. When we go on the other side, and we stand before the Creator, that He will say, "Come in, my child, well done, good and faithful servant." And so that is what I want you, the community of Kenfield, to think about, think, put Dominica first, think about your country, think about your children. Education is the key that open every door, any door it will open. If you don't have that key, you'll have to pass all on the galba, galté, to try to enter. Take care of your children, those of you who have grandchildren, talk to them. Sometimes we say children are not listening, but you would be surprised, if we keep going to them, now and then, they take a little, they sit down, they reflect. We, there, there were times when we used to be each other's keeper, we see somebody, child going down the road doing something, we tell the parent, that's the, the days when parents were very happy, when you tell them about their children, but now the parent's ready to jump on you, some of them, so, but still, try, at least you said you tried. But you have to do that gently, not in a way that you want to bring down somebody's child. Because some of us, we see people, children, instead of going to the parent and say, "Look here, I saw your daughter, you know, you sent her, you know, a nice little way, I saw these people, you know about it." Talk to them gently, not say, "I saw your child, you know, with this kind of person, you know where she was?" My mind tells me is that. We have to be careful, be gently in how we do our things, let it be in a caring way, because when we're really concerned for people, we do things differently in a concerned manner. And I want to thank you all for the support that you have been giving to us as the Dominica Labor Party. We are there to serve you, that is what we came to do, we are not greater than you, you are there to serve you. And then you can tell us where we're going wrong. Tell us where we're going wrong. A lot of us like to hear where we're going wrong, what we're not doing. People come to you and tell you, you know, this person, this, and you don't, you don't have to believe everything somebody say about somebody else. What are, another thing I would like of UK and field people, when you see somebody getting something for themselves, that's a blessing that's coming, yours is coming. So don't be jealous, don't say that person is getting too much, yours will come. And if we are greed in the process of getting those things, it wouldn't last, it wouldn't last, because we have incidents where people grab, 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 they don't need it, they deprive, and at the end of the day, it doesn't last. So I'd just like you in this community to continue working with each other, work for your community, find out things, go to your urban council, city council, find out what's going there. You have a right as constituents, as residents, to go to the council to find out what is happening. You hear something, go and find out what's happening. Everybody deserves a second chance, so let's work together, love each other, and all I ask of you all is to pray for us, because we really need that. We cannot survive without prayers, we cannot do it on our own, and every little prayer comes. But prayer is a thing, you can pray for us, but if we're not willing to accept, it wouldn't come, but still pray for us, because all of us are willing to accept. And may God bless you all, and thank you for having me, and all the best.
This evening, I'm going to give you a brief, because I mean, I had two powerful presentations before me, I'm going to give you a brief report on what you do as far as the Minister of Health. And of course, as Honorable Blackmore mentioned, one of our flagship programs, or projects rather, if not probably what is going to be the most significant project, project we've been undertaken sorry by this government would be our new national hospital. A gift, and I want to reiterate, a gift of forty-million US dollars, those of us who have calculators are very good in maths, multiplied by two-point-seven-one-six-nine, which I think is the ongoing rate, you will get one-hundred-and-eight-million EC dollars, a gift from our friends on the People's Republic of China. And, and this is, I think this is significant, okay, because often time you hear, okay, the opposition and, and who the PM referred to some years ago, the enemies of progress, refer to us as a rogue state, and we are no country, no institution wants to do business with us anymore. And we will, and as we go along with my presentation, you will see where we can refute this. In fact, just, I think, two weeks ago, the government of Mexico committed five-million US dollars into, which is thirty-million EC dollars, into building the new Marigot Hospital, yes, a new hospital in Marigot. So tell me, so tell me if this is the sign of a country that, that they say that's a rogue country, a country that nobody wants to deal with. And again, as I said, as I go along, you will see where, because of our relationship with institutions, because of our astute accountability or transparency, that countries and institutions, as the World Bank, the CDB, IMF, have no problems in dealing with your government, because we have shown fiscal prudent, we would have shown fiscal responsibility. So your new national hospital is here. I see everywhere I go that meets a lot of skepticism, a lot, a lot was said about the hospital, some said it was an election gimmick, some said it was a political gimmick, so we could have won the two thousand and fourteen elections. Calypso were made about the hospital, the song of hospitals in the sky, and I always say that the hospital in the sky has landed. And those of you who would have been to PMH recently would see the progress that we're making on your new national hospital. Of course, the, the issue as to, I'm sure maybe one of you will ask, or would have asked, and have exhausted this, and all different further we have spoken, as to why we chose to build a hospital in the, in the current site, because it's an active hospital site. Again, the original thinking of the administration was to have moved to a new site, but the experts advised us, and my Cabinet colleagues are here, they will, they can all refer to that, the experts advised us that the current site would have been the best, given the population spread, access, access, et cetera, et cetera. So we listened to the experts, and contrary to popular belief, where they say we're running a dictatorial government, we listen to people we think know better than us. So we went ahead with constructing the hospital on the, on the, sorry, on the current site, because we were advised that it would have been, it was done in the past, and it can be done again. So the hospital is going to be done in seven phases, we are going full steam ahead with the first phase, and those of you, as I said, who have not visited the PMH recently, you should take a look, I mean, I, I'm not going to advise you to go to the, to the active construction site, okay, without your proper head, et cetera, but it could be through the galvanized fencing, and you will see how quickly our Chinese friends, together with local counterparts, how quickly they're progressing. And the Chinese would have told us that they will give us a fully functional hospital in thirty months, two and a half years, and again, as I say everywhere I go, knowing our Chinese, not dissing our local people, okay, but we, 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 we know, let's be, let's be honest, we know our Chinese friends that by, at the end of twenty-nine months and twenty-nine days, we will have the keys for fully functional hospital. So the, the first phase is being built to house the Accident and Emergency Department, what many of us refers to as the casualty department, a two-story, really state-of-the-art with its own theater, and the building next to it will be what they call Medical Technology Building Number One, to host things like the labs, x-rays, to host new and exciting modern equipment like MRI, and what they call a high-frequency ultrasound to treat tumors, cancers, et cetera. So these are the first two buildings that are going up. So because the, because of the complications of building the hospital on a current site, it has to be done in phases, meaning that we first have to build temporary buildings to move whatever it is that we're going to demolish, then we build the permanent structure, we move back, and then move on to the next phase. Now, while this might sound complicated, as a Minister of Health, I also would have had my, my concerns, you know, and this is why we took two years really before this project finally got off the ground, because we had to ensure that all the i's were dotted, all the t's were crossed, we had to ensure that everything was in place, because it wasn't just a simple matter of going to clean slate, or clean, or new ground, and just building, we had to ensure that everything was first class. And also, the quality of the hospital, we had to ensure that this is something that was going to serve us properly, and also something that our Chinese friends, the donors, would also be proud of. So we were a little slow in getting started, and we took two years, as I said, back and forth, lots of, lots of discussions as to whether this should be, this should be there, but we finally got started. And then, as I was saying, in retrospect as a Minister of Health, while, while, while we understand the issues and that, and the nuances of building on an, on an active hospital site, in retrospect, one of the, one of the benefits of this is that, because it's going to be done in phases, and we have to ensure that each phase is functional, each part that people is functional before we move on to the next phase, it means therefore that by the end of the thirty months, we are going to have a fully functional hospital, new and modern hospital. In addition to, of course, the, the, as my good friend Ian Douglas, member of Parliament from Porto, like I say, a new spanking new building, he likes to refer to it, and we're also going to have, as I mentioned, state-of-the-art equipment like MRI, what they call high-frequency ultrasound for treating tumors, nurse, and a number of other exciting equipment. In addition, your government would have also planned ahead, and as we speak, we have a number of our local doctors being trained overseas in various specialties to provide services that we never had before. So sometimes when I hear the people on the other side, you know, talking like our health system is, is, is going down the drain, and we have the worst health system in the island, we heard the representative from the Pan American Health Organization at the launching of the National Health Pilot Program, Insurance Pilot Program, where he praised Dominica, our primary healthcare services, and our health system. Yes, we have a long way to go, and yes, we have a long way to go, especially in terms of attitude and work ethics, okay, but no one can deny the investment and effort your government is putting into improving the health services here in Dominica. So our local sons and daughters are being trained in various specialties, and as I mentioned, new and exciting services, I see my friend from the Dominica Council agent, Mr. Joseph, your, your organization would have been lobbying for geriatrician, okay, as we speak, we have a young lady being trained as a geriatrician, which is to do with the really specialized medicine of elderly people, I don't like senior citizens rather. Nephrology, that to do with the kidneys, urology, geriatrics, oncology, you just name it, a dozen more of our sons and daughters being trained. And this is important, and I'll tell you why, because often time we also hear the criticism. Because oftentimes we also hear the criticism that, that a lot of the people that we see at the hospital, okay? Foreigners, they speak foreign languages. And again, we shouldn't be criticizing that people, okay? Because these are people who would have held our hands during our crawling stages, as we are doing now. So right now, they would have come, help us along. And right now, we in a position, right now, we can train our own people. So pretty soon, in addition to the Venezuelans, the Cubans, and the Chinese who helped us at the hospital, we will have our own local doctors, people who can speak both English, patua, and kookoi to, to, to save the Princess Margaret Hospital. Yes, I'm kookoi, yeah. Okay, so, but again, as I always say that, yes, we are building a new hospital, a new building, and new equipment, and also training new doctors in, in exciting new services, where we no longer will have to travel overseas or the need for traveling overseas for medical attention should be less and less. However, we are always saying that, given the rising cost of these services, because at the end of the day, these doctors have to be paid. These, the hospital has to be maintained, electricity and water and, and all of this. The equipment has to be maintained. And trust me, I sit in the shaking head, these are expensive ventures undertaken. We are saying that over the years, we have seen an increase in healthcare. A lot of us here would have access, even those of us who access the public health sector service, which is free. Sometimes there's services which are no longer, which are not available within the public health sector. We have to go to the private lab or go to the private pharmacy. And we know the cost of medicine. We know the cost of this test. And I'm sure the member of parliament from Mahu and, and Lady Danielle can attest to the number of people who come to us on a daily basis seeking assistance towards, towards, in seeking health, healthcare, sorry. So we understand the, the, the rising, the rising cost of healthcare. And we understand that not everybody can afford what they call conventional or contemporary health insurance policies, which will take care of you when you sick. Which is why a month or so ago, we launched a called a Pilot National Health Insurance Program. And Honorable Blackmore is right. We have countries, much more developed countries, grappling with the issue of universal health coverage, grappling with the issue of national health insurance. And I'll refer to President Obama and Obamacare in the US, which is what it's all about. And as Lady Danielle also mentioned, as a government, we make no apologies for trying to assist people who cannot assist themselves. Because let's, let's look at it. There will always be people in our society who cannot help themselves. And we, as your Labor Party government, we feel that we have a moral and ethical and a spiritual obligation to assist these people. And we make no apologies for this. Which is why we, in this year's financial budget, five million dollars was budgeted towards what they call this pilot program. The idea behind this insurance, or pilot insurance, is that we are going to target one of the most, what we've been advised is the most vulnerable group, which is mothers, single mothers forty-five years and below, with children three years and under. Now, it's not going to stop here. This is a pilot program. So we are launching this vulnerable group. We'll see how it works out. See where little errors are made. See how we can improve on it. And incrementally, we'll go about adding more vulnerable group, sorry, until everybody is captured. In other words, all of these exciting new health services we are providing, it has to be accessed by, what I like to refer to as Joe Millionaire and also Joe Popper. In other words, not only big people like Honorable Blackmore, he's my partner, so I can, I can call his name, okay? Should be able to access these, these, these new services. But everybody, even the poor farmer from Pity Seven, I can refer to Pity Seven, because that's who I represent in parliament, should be able to access these services equally. So this is what your government has been doing. And as I said, you don't have to, you don't have to take it from us. We heard the representative from the, from Pa'hu speaker at the launch of the National Health Insurance Program, where he praised the government for actually making this bold step. Why? Because I can tell you as a Minister of Health, when I took office two, two-plus years ago, I see my secretary is there, she can all refer to that. Okay, lots of governments before, okay? Lots and lots of documentation as to universal health coverage, sitting on shelves, taking dust. But it had to take your government to actually make this bold step to actually implementing this pilot project. So contrary to what you hear them thinking or saying, rather, it wasn't just scary to woke up overnight and decide, well, you're going to put five billion dollars of CBI money to give people for free. No. This is part, this is part of decades of discussion, or rather, the result of decades of discussion. And your government, being the bold and innovative government that we are, we decided, well, enough talk. Let us not walk the walk. And we decided to put in five million dollars to pilot this project. And if all goes well, and I say that God above, and God loves the Dominican Labor Party. I can tell that to you. And I'll tell you why as we go along. As there's a God above, that there's no reason why this program shouldn't succeed. And eventually, in next five years or so, we should see each and every Dominican covered on the National Health Insurance Program. I mentioned a, I mentioned a Marigot Hospital. And again, contrary to, contrary to what you've been hearing, especially by the member of parliament from Marigot, who every now and then, who every now and then, when he realized that his, not, that his insignificance nationally, he takes up the Marigot Health Service as something to talk about. And in fact, I was, I was informed that a couple of years ago, he was on CBN4, it was running his mouth about the Marigot Hospital. When those of you who follow politics actively, or, or rather closely, we know that it has always been part of the Labor Party manifesto or commitments to build a new hospital in Marigot. Of course, given the strategic location of Marigot, next to the airport, et cetera, et cetera. However, events of the past two to three years would have somehow slowed the, the actual progress on work on the Marigot Hospital. And why we don't make any excuses, it's a fact, people. Tropical America happened, okay? That's a fact, okay? Also, we were caught up, we were caught up in, in the whole new national hospital, which we felt was a national priority at the time. So we are not saying that the Marigot Hospital was not important. We are saying that the new national hospital, of which we had funds already allocated by our Chinese counterparts. And they were getting anxious, telling us, hold on a second, fellas, we have forty million US dollars for you guys and you guys, you know, sleeping around. So we had to move on this. Plus the fact that sometimes the technical expertise that we need to move some of these projects were not always forthcoming. Which is why, and Lady Danielle is there, still tell you that, and I want to thank my cabinet colleagues, that over the past six months or so, the cabinet would have appointed a special unit within the Ministry of Health to look after all what they call our capital projects. Because recognizing that the Ministry of Health, and I'm sure those of you who would have access to the budget estimates, you can go to it to see the number of capital projects that the Ministry of Health would have lined up in this financial year. And as I said, seeing that the technical advice and expertise coming from the public health ministry was not always forthcoming. And especially after Tropical America, where they had so much other work to do, the cabinet would have appointed especially within the Ministry of Health, just to deliver these projects, an engineer, an architect, project office, et cetera. And because of that, now, we are now going to see some of these projects moving quicker and quicker. We are going to see in this financial year a number of new health centers being built. And I want to pause here a while. I see a member of parliament run outside. When he heard that we're going to build a new health center in Colliho, and we really have to, because the Colliho Health Center was damaged a, a few years ago. And right out there, it was in a rented building. Also, Newtown would have had some serious issues. And also in Bellevue Chauvin, to house, of course, to serve incoming Pity Seven residents in Bellevue Chauvin. Your member of parliament has been at my throat, literally at my throat, for the past couple of years as to a health center in Kenfield. And just to assure you and to commit to you that this is being seriously considered, discussions in this new financial year. Because I've, because I've told him also that it's not just a simple matter of just getting a building and establishing a health center. There are the logistics that we have to consider, staffing, equipment, et cetera. But just rest assured that your parliament, and as Lady Danielle told you, your parliament, when, when he wants something, he, he, he doesn't let you breathe, okay? He's always, yeah, at your throat to get it done. Just to let you know that this is being considered. So, so we're moving ahead also. We plan for the new Marigot Hospital. And I know I've taken some flak. I mean, my friends who follow social media, especially Facebook, they always let me know, you know, what's being said about me. Although, to be honest with you, I really don't care. Our prime minister have always taught us, I remember the first things he taught me as a young politician entering politics is that, yes, every now and then, you know, you kind of have to listen to what they say, okay? But if you spend too much time listening to what the other people say, then you have no time to do the positive things. And we are much too busy building Dominica than to listen to the negative rhetoric out there. But my friends and members, every now and then, you know, they love me a lot and they care about me. So they will let me know what's being said. And when I mentioned that I see no reason why work shouldn't, shouldn't begin on the Marigot Hospital in the next few months, some told me I was mad, I was talking nonsense, et cetera. But if, if people took time to listen, if people took time to listen, to inform themselves and to get the facts, then they will be, they will appear to be less stupid when they make these public statements. Because I would have mentioned that the five million US dollars given by the Mexican government is going to be implemented by what they call UNOPS. That's a United Nations Office for Project Services. And knowing the experience and the expertise and the efficiency of these guys, okay? There's no reason why we shouldn't have plans and everything within our possession within the next two to three months. So when they start talking, so I hear them talking that, okay, the minister is, well, some people call me some idiot and I'm not sure what I'm talking about, okay? But we know what we're talking about within this, within this administration. We don't make public statements unless we are ready, okay? Unless we, unless we are sure what you're talking about. In addition, we would have heard within the Ministry of Health, what they call Pa'hu implemented smart hospital project, another five million dollars. So again, when you hear people talk about that, that governments and organizations don't want to deal with Dominica because we are crooks, we are criminals, we are corrupt, blah, blah, blah. Okay, to let you know, five million dollars, where we have already identified three health facilities around the island to upgrade them. Because we realize that especially after disasters, sometimes health facilities are the first ones to suffer. But a health facility shouldn't be closed. It shouldn't not be given services after disaster. In fact, more than ever, a health facility should be functioning, especially in cases of where we have multiple trauma, a lot of people injured, et cetera. And we saw what almost happened on the west coast, Lady Danielle, after, after Erika, where people were drinking the, the river water and we were that close to getting a serious outbreak of dysentery, et cetera. So with this project, three health centers have been identified, Laplin, Granby, and the Marigot Health Center to upgrade. Where we're going to put solar panels, they go to what they call self-containing. So they're not going to depend on the Wasko or I'm dumb like for electricity and water after disasters, but they'll be fully functional, even if the services are interrupted. I mentioned the new health centers that we are going to build at Vicas, Colliho, Newtown, Bellevue Chauvin. And yes, Honorable Blackmore, as I said, we will, we will include Kenfield in, in the discussion. In trying to round it up quickly, because we want to give you a chance to, to ask a question and to interact with us. We have another, we have a number of other exciting services within the Ministry of Health. A number of you have probably visited your health facility for what they call the Miracle Eye Program, Mission Milagro, where we have our Venezuelan friends who would have come down to what they call screen patients requiring surgery, terigium, what they call, people call growing flesh on the eye, and cataracts. The Venezuelans are now here on island for the second round of screening. And stay tuned to your radio to know when they will be in your area. So right now, they're going to be assessing the people who would have been identified in the first set of screening. So then they can tell you finally, well, okay, yes, okay, you need surgery or you don't need surgery, et cetera. The eye can see clearly now where we have targeted schoolchildren. Because we realize that a number of our kids, that some of them whom we call quote-unquote "slow", in retrospect afterward, we found out that they had issues seeing the board, okay? And, and then we classify them or we call them slow. But we didn't show you what they had were visual problems. So your government, with the help of our Cuban friends, would have undertaken this program, I can see clearly now, where the kids are going to be screened and those requiring spectacles or whatever the case may be, contact lenses, they're going to be provided this free of charge. And already, I understand a number of our schoolchildren, both primary and secondary schoolchildren are benefiting from this program. So we ask ourselves, of course, okay, where is the funding coming from all of these wonderful programs? And Honorable Blackmore and Lady Danielle mentioned, okay, touch on the CBI program. And as I've said everywhere I go, we make no apologies for the CBI program. Because we have to understand people that pushed Tropical America. And as much as we don't like to talk about Erika, especially myself, Erika brings back many sad memories for me. But Erika did happen. And Erika left us a debt of 1.4 million dollars, 1.4 billion dollars, sorry. And I like to say billion with the B. And I like to say billion with the B, and billion is not the one with the six zeros, it's the one with the nine zeros. Ninety percent of our gross domestic product lost during Erika. So Erika happened. So we ask ourselves, after Erika, your government could have come to you, and I want to make a special appeal to the public servants. Your government could have come to you and say, listen, we need to raise one point four billion dollars to rebuild Dominica, to get us back to where we were on the morning of August twenty-seventh. But we didn't do that. And I spoke to a number of reasonable public servants, and they said that since Erika, not once was our salary late, not one month was our salary late. And I'm sure people would understand if your government had asked you to take a picket at that time to allow us to see how we could rebuild. However, no picket. Yes, I really have been on time, in fact, before the activities like Carnival and Coral Festival, you get the money by the third week, just to ensure that you have money in your pocket to be able to patronize these events. Okay, so after one point four billion dollars in damages, okay? And you still have all of these wonderful programs happening. And you ask yourself, but how are you doing it? Okay, and this is where the Citizenship By-Investment Program comes in. And again, as I said before, we make no apologies for this CBI program. And you have to be smart people, and you have to open your minds to understand what's going on. The Citizenship By-Investment Program is not a noble idea to Dominica, it's not something that's scary to Blackmore, Dr. Darren, Lady Danielle, okay? Just got up overnight and decided they're going to sell passports, as I refer to it. It's a program that has been existing long before maybe I was even born. Some of the even more developed countries in the world are engaging such a program. We have America, yes, America, the great United States of America, engage in a program. You could Google it online, it's called the EB5 Program. Where if you're interested, for example, in expediting your permanent residency status, you invest five hundred thousand dollars in America, and then they promise you that they will speed up your permanent residence status. In fact, I was informed, or I read, that you even get back this money after a certain period. This is to show you the importance what America places on sometimes raising revenues. Because some of these monies goes back into what they call the small and micro-business sector in the U.S. Okay, so this is not a noble program. It's not something that we, Lady Danielle, myself, and Blackmore, we go around with passports in our pocket or briefcase and we go to New York and London to sell people. Okay, it is what they call, the world is fast becoming what they call a global village. Where people now looking at all the opportunities where they can settle, where they can invest for a number of reasons. Even some people to escape political persecution, because we have wars and famines and all sorts of stuff in the country. So the world is fast becoming this global village. And while we welcome, yes, the suggestions and the recommendations on the concerns, the genuine concern that some of you have, okay, guys, okay, you need to see how you can boost up or rather beef up the due diligence, et cetera, et cetera. We understand these concerns. But the idea to make it look like it's this evil sinister unaditable program, okay? We really want to dispel this. And we have examples in the region, and I want you to take note of that. While I wouldn't call the country's name, for, of course, respect for Sister Island, those of us, those are smart ones among us, we know who I'm talking about. We have examples in the region where the opposition at the time, they are now in government, but the opposition at the time, they did the very same thing that your current opposition is trying to do, okay? Meaning, they cried down this Citizenship By-Investment Program, which did so many wonderful things for some kids. And if you, oh, right. It doesn't matter, okay? Okay, none of you heard that. Okay, but seriously, okay, this program did so many wonderful things for that particular island. And at the time, they were in opposition, okay? The same thing that's happening now, they cried it down and the all sorts of things, corruption, et cetera. Now, they, well, God looked on them and they found themselves in government. It's not going to happen here, okay? As I said before, espamal papa, let us fool ourselves. But God forbid, okay, that this, the opposition in that Sister Island, they are now in government. And now they are in the driver's seat now, and they have the responsibility now to develop the country now, and they are crying now. You know why? Because they cried down a sort of revenue that the country had that was going for them. So now, as I said before, it's easy for you to sit behind a console on a radio station or be on a computer and go on Facebook and talk all sorts of crap, what I call BTS in patwa. Okay, but when you come in here now and you tasked with the responsibility of developing your country, then you understand what it takes to run a country. So we make, as I said, no apologies, because this CBI revenue is what is funding a lot of the programs that we have going for us. And again, we make no apology for sharing the country's success or the country's resources with the less fortunate. Lady Danielle and Honorable Blackmore, I mean, and in the tradition of probably trying to be spiritual, I can go to a scripture verse that I wrote down, 2 Corinthians 9:7, where it says, listen to me, "Every man according as he perceives in his heart. So let him give, not grudgingly, or of necessity, for God loveth a cheerful giver." Okay, I repeat this, "for God loveth a cheerful giver." Which is why, when I see that God loves the Dominican Labour Party, okay? I did not just say that off the top of my head, because I'm not really a religious or spiritual person. But the Bible itself says that, okay, God loves somebody who gives out of their heart. Which is why, as I said, this Dominican Labour Party, we have all of these programs in place to capture the less fortunate. And Lady Danielle mentioned what they call the fancy term, it's called a non-contributory pension allowance. We say over seventy, it's easier to say. These are people who at some point in time, people would have made a contribution. But unfortunately, some of them, their family members, their children, okay, would not have been as responsible as they should have been, they feel abandoned, and I can tell you about them. I worked as a district medical officer for a number of years. And I can tell you going around doing home visits, okay? I mean, the conditions some of our senior citizens would be in. And this is no laughing matter, people, okay? So when you hear people criticize this program, okay, these are people who have no love in their heart and they don't understand the realities of life sometimes. People who would have been abandoned, I mean, who would have been at the mercy of probably the neighbors, maybe every order they to come to give them a cleanup, okay, to throw away their waste, okay, their human waste. So when you hear them criticizing the Yes We Care Program and the over seventy, and even the washroom program, okay, I can tell you, okay, how important these things are to a number of our people, especially people in the rural areas. And talking of the washroom program, people, again, they don't understand, they don't make the linkages between reality and what is going on. Just a few months after the prime minister launched this program, and I've always been a very strong supporter of the program, again, as a district medical officer, going around seeing where some of our senior citizens had to do number one and number two, it's no laughing matter. And a few months after that, here comes the United Nations talking about the eradication of pit latrines. Because they recognize the issue of sanitation and the unhygienic conditions some of our people live in, and when this thing gets into the environment, okay, the pollution it causes. Sustainable Development Goal Number Six, United Nations Sustainable Development Goal Number Six, clean water and sanitation. And Dominica, I can safely tell you, might be the first country probably to achieve this goal. Because we have ninety, almost hundred percent portable water coverage, or rather, portable water to our citizens. And with this program, the eradication of pit latrine, we will take care of the sanitation aspect of it. So I've told my people in Windindong, especially the people who criticize the CBI program, my people from Pidit Savan, I see a couple of my Pidit Savan patriots, okay? All the who made their home in Kainfield, and my good friend Wilson, who's from Kainfield, but he fondly loving Pidit Savan. So technically, he's from Pidit Savan. But I've spoken to them, that while, when they go around, the few of them who go around supporting the nonsense that's being spoken out there, the future of Pidit Savan depends on this CBI program. Because Honorable Blackmore, he mentioned that the Pidit Savan resettlement is being funded by the CBI, but he didn't mention the amount, he didn't mention the quantum. This is going to cost more than one hundred million dollars to resettle the Pidit Savan people in Bellevue-Chopin. So people have to understand, and especially those, I said, the few of them, the handful of them going around talking nonsense, they need to understand that if the failure of the CBI means that the Pidit Savan resettlement will also fail. And then government will have to tell each and everyone, debu yo kozo, those of you who can understand, pardon. In other words, everybody, go ahead and fend for yourselves. Lady Danielle mentioned the amount of money that's been spent to date. Two years after Tropical America, the government is still holding each and everybody's hand from Pidit Savan. People, and this is commendable, we mustn't take these things for granted. Millions of dollars, millions of dollars being spent on a monthly basis towards rental and displacement allowances, among others. We mustn't take this thing for granted, because God forbid that you remove this administration, as Lady Danielle said, okay? All of these, all of these things, these are going to stop. They have said it, they have said it in black, they have said it, they have it in black and white. All of these things are going to stop. So let's not take these things for granted. So I've warned my Pidit Savan people, I see a few of them here, that, as I said, the future of Pidit Savan depends on the CBI. Which is why I will say, thank God for the CBI program, sorry. And let us continue to pray, as I say everywhere I go, those of us who roll the rosary, let's roll a rosary. Those of us who believe in Allah, let's pray to Allah. Those of us who believe in Buddha, let's rub Buddha's belly. Okay, to pray that our CBI program continues to be a success. I want to thank you for listening to me, I'm sorry if I was long and drawn out. But always a pleasure to be in Kainfield, thank you very much.